Did I give everybody an agenda except myself? Did I not hand out the agenda?
No. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, July 15th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. All right, we're going to start off with announcements. And the town is now accepting nominations for special merit awards. At the 2024 Special Town Meeting, special merit awards were officially added to the Salary Administration Plan for SAP employees to recognize outstanding contributions by town staff. You can nominate a deserving SAP employee, full or part-time, in one of the following categories. One, communications, going above and beyond in keeping the public informed and improving transparency. Two, efficiency, helping the town run more smoothly through cross-training, flexibility, and time-saving ideas. And three, pinnacle of excellence, making extraordinary efforts to support others and improve how we work. Nominations are open to residents, board and committee members, department heads, and fellow employees, and I encourage anyone who would like to nominate an employee for one of the special merit awards to do so. Nominations can be made by a form that you can find on our town website under the news flash for the special merit awards, and was also posted to the town's Facebook page. And they are to be submitted by July 24th to the town manager's office. Are there any other announcements? Okay. So we are going to move on to our 7:15 appointment, and I want to apologize that we're starting a little late. We had some technical difficulties. So this is the toll booth fundraiser request for the Lunenburg Music Aiders for August 9th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Hi, thank you for putting that first. I appreciate that. Laura Bridge in 3D9 Mulpus Road. And I submitted the application for a certificate to provide, put a, fill the boot toll road on August 9th for the music aiders.
Can you tell us about the organization?
Yeah, so we support basically anything related to the school music programs, fifth grade and up, anything that the town, you know, can't, doesn't have the wherewithal to fund, or it's outside services. So if there's equipment fixes, you know, the uniforms get, you know, the marching band uniforms get dry cleaned each year. We take care of all the hemming. We have volunteers that man the snack shack during the football season. We're really looking this year to do a lot more fundraising to fill some of the budget cuts. So we've really got a great group of parents, and we had a really great, fantastic fifth grade class that's moving up to the sixth grade. And our, I got from Ms. McGregor, we've gone from 12 band, marching band students last year, we're at 19 this year. So a huge bump up, and that's what we had hoped to see coming out of COVID and having the kids get back into the music program. So we've got a really good group of kids, they're super excited, and we've got a full week of band camp coming up, the week of the...
11th.
The 11th. So we'll have a bunch of parent volunteers there too, so we'll be at the high school and marching all over the field, so, yeah.
Awesome. How's everything doing with applications? Everything looking good?
The application is 100% in order.
Great. You did ask for IRS determination letter?
What you gave me was sufficient.
I gave you from the IRS website, good. In fact, I didn't realize I don't have a copy of it, but the IRS is sending me one. I will have it in 10 to 14 business days. And I have reached, I have heard from the police chief and the DPW, and we have our vests, and we'll have all our waivers submitted. Once, I didn't want to put out the call for volunteers until tonight, so.
All right, sounds good. Any questions from the board?
Is this rain or shine? Or do you have rain date?
We'll do rain or shine. We'll want, we want to put it right, it's Saturday right before band camp, so we want really, we'll do rain or shine, as long as it's safe.
All right, great. Well, I will move to accept the toll booth, to approve the toll booth fundraiser request by the Lunenburg Music Aiders for August 9th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Second?
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
No? Okay, the motion passes three to one. All right, well, thank you so much for coming in tonight, and I hope your fundraiser goes well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All right. So it looks like PAC is now in Zoom, which means that we can go back to our first meeting here, which is the role and jurisdiction of the Lunenburg Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds presented by Town Council.
Good evening. Let me try and get my video on so I can see, or you can see me, I can see you already. How's that?
Perfect.
Great. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to, good to see you all again. So yes, as, as you just read, the item on your agenda is a discussion of the role and authority of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. This has been a topic of discussion between Town Manager Warren and I over the course of the past few weeks, in connection with certain inquiries or requests that have been made by a member, maybe both members, of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. My understanding of the history of this particular board is that while it is a board that's referenced in your charter, as some of you may know, as, as all of you may know, there is a section, an article within your charter, Article 3, that identifies various elected officials, including boards, commissions, and committees. Everything from the select board to the school committee to the Board of Health. And I think that there's some 14 or 15 subsections of Article 3, and one of those sections, Section 3-11, is entitled Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. And what that section does is, in very simple terms, much like the other subsections of Article 3, it identifies in, in one subsection, subsection A, the composition and term of office of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. And then in a second, and the only other subsection, B, it identifies the powers and duties of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. And the entire, the entire section 3-11, I think, is four sentences. So it's not terribly wordy or comprehensive or detailed, but it does set forth those basic parameters. And the truth is, as is the case with many of your other charter provisions, it mimics existing provisions in Massachusetts general laws. So Chapter 41, Section 45 of Massachusetts general laws allows cities and towns in Massachusetts to create boards of commissioners of trust funds. And that statute defines the membership, it defines the term of members, and it defines their powers and duties. And in many respects, almost verbatim, your charter includes those same provisions. So, so that's in a nutshell what we're, what we're working with. Let me tell you a bit about what it says in, in our, our guidance to, to Ms. Warren and ultimately to, to the town. So don't think there's any debate concerning composition and term of office. This board consists of three members. Those members are elected for terms of three years each, in such a manner that every year the term of one member expires and is, is up for, for, for either renewal or I guess reelection, or, or the election of a new individual to, to that particular seat if the, if the incumbent doesn't run for reelection. My understanding is that in recent years, and as you know, I've been, I've been town council, my firm has been since 2017, I've never received a question in the past eight or nine years about the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. And as I understand it, maybe the reason for that is because I don't think you've had membership on that board. And that happens in municipalities from time to time. I will get this question in many of our communities, how, how can that possibly be? If we have a board, we, we need to have members. Well, that's true, but you, you can't force the hand of, of the citizens to, to nominate themselves or, or run for these positions. And so it's not unusual for these, I refer to them as lesser boards, and I don't mean lesser significance, but boards that don't necessarily perform as significant of a day-to-day or week-to-week function as maybe, let's say, in Lunenburg, the Board of Sewer Commissioners or the Planning Board. It's not uncommon for there to be vacancies in these boards, and sometimes vacancies in all of the seats of a board, like the Board of Commissioners, in which case the board effectively doesn't, doesn't operate. But again, my further understanding is that there were a couple of individuals who were write-in candidates for two seats on, on the, on the board, and they were consequently elected at your recent annual municipal election. And so now you, now you have at least two members of a three-member Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. So moving on to the powers and duties, the language of the charter, and I'm just going to read it for you so you know the starting point for, for our discussion, it says that the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds shall have the management of all trust funds given or bequeathed for the benefit of the town or the inhabitants thereof, unless the donor in making the gift or bequest shall make some other provision for the management of the fund. So that's the first sentence of this subsection entitled Powers and Duties. And then the next two sentences go on to say, the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds shall, consistent with the terms of the trust, manage and control the trust and distribute the income in accordance with the terms of the trust. And furthermore, that the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds shall keep a record of its doings, and at the close of each financial year shall make a report to town meetings showing the total amount of the funds, their investments, receipts, and disbursements. So the question that arose in, in the context of those last three sentences that define the powers and duties of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds is, well, which, which trust funds does the Board of Commissioners have authority over? What is within their purview? What is, what are they empowered to, 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 to manage, control, consistent with the terms of the charter? And so we, we have to, we have to answer that question by looking in two places. Number one, the language of the charter itself, and we know one exception, it's, it's in the language of the charter, is if in making the gift or bequest, the donor that creates the, the trust and that, that donates the monies that constitute the trust property. If the donor makes some other provision for the management of the fund, then the donor's wishes have to be, have to be honored. So that's, that's clear within the language of your, your charter. But then there's another, another component to this, and it's not necessarily explicit on the face of the charter, but there are many, in the context of municipal government, less so in the world of, of a trust in a state's law, but in the world of municipal government, there are many trusts that are the consequence of specific statutory provisions that will authorize the creation of trust funds, or even more generically, will give a certain board, commission, or committee within a city or a town the authority to manage monies that are placed within its oversight, that, that are within its purview. And so what, what, what Ms. Warren provided to me as a starting point, is she provided a list of the various funds, the various trust funds that are in the town's possession. And I guess what I would say is I would sort of categorize these, maybe, maybe place them into four categories. You've got funds that are conservation funds, and I'll just leave it at that, we'll talk in a moment about what it means to be a conservation fund. There are library funds, I think that's obvious from the terminology what those funds are intended for. There are cemetery funds, and then there's everything else, which I think in the, in the documentation that I was provided was just under the category of miscellaneous, and there are a handful of miscellaneous trust mon, uh, trust funds that have been bequeathed to the town to be used for various different, different purposes. And I won't get into too many details because I don't think that we need to for purposes of discussing the, the boards, the Board of Commissioners' purview. So as we look to these individual funds, we looked first at conservation funds, and I have some experience with conservation money, so this wasn't difficult for us. We looked to Chapter 40, Section 8C of Massachusetts general laws, which authorizes the creation of conservation commissions, it's sort of the, the enabling legislation for CONCOMs throughout Massachusetts. And that language is clear, that the commission can contract for materials and services with available funds that are placed within its purview. So monies that are donated to the town through donation, through a, a bequest, for conservation purposes, or to the conservation commission, or for the conservation of lands or particular property or a park within the town of Lunenburg, those are conservation funds, and I would say that those are within the purview of the conservation commission, consistent with that specific authority in the statute. Library funds, similar analysis, although I will tell you, there's not a lot of case law. I referenced before that this is a charter provision, but that it mimics Chapter 41, Section 45 of Massachusetts general laws. Well, I sometimes, I'm almost always happy to find that a charter provision mimics a provision in Massachusetts general laws, because of course, there's not a lot of case law concerning your specific charter. How many times has your charter been challenged and resulted in a decision of the courts? It hasn't happened, and that's the case in most municipalities. When there's a, a Massachusetts general law that mirrors the language in, in your charter, I can at least look to court cases that might exist interpreting that specific provision in Massachusetts general laws. Unfortunately, when you look to Chapter 41, Section 45, again, because this is not, these, these commissions are not necessarily performing such a significant day-to-day function that there has been controversy that has resulted in, in voluminous litigation in Massachusetts, there's virtually no case law. The case law that does exist is quite old, and it's, none of it's really particularly on point. However, the exception to that is that there are a handful of cases, I think we found three in total, that address library funds. And those cases all stand for the proposition that money that is raised or appropriated by the town for support or maintenance of a library or for library purposes, i- is, is of course managed by the library itself, and similarly, gifts or bequests to the library are likewise managed by either the library corporation if one exists, or the library if it's a, if it's a, a department or an entity within city or town government. So again, the analysis is a bit different with some supporting case law, but the, the end result is the same as it was with conservation funds, which is that those library funds are within the purview of the, of the, the Board of Trustees of the library. And then finally, with respect to cemetery funds, once again, there's a statute directly on point, Chapter 114, Section 25, which speaks to cemetery commissioners receiving gifts or bequests for the purpose of maintaining cemeteries and cemetery lots. So again, that authority, the oversight lies with the cemetery commission. So conservation, library, cemetery, there is, there are, there are statutes, there's case law in, in the instance of the library, that vest those bodies, conservation commission, library Board of Trustees, and cemetery commission with the authority to manage their, their own funds, their, their own donations and bequests. Now, that, the analysis is not the same with the various trust funds that fall under the category of, again, miscellaneous, and that's our terminology, not anybody else's. But those various miscellaneous funds, some of those are specific for specific purposes, and that appears in the name of the title that's been given to the miscellaneous fund. Others are devises from estates or other donations that don't necessarily have titles, but they're specific within the, the devise, whether it's a will or some other form of bequest, what those monies can be used for. Those are within the purview of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. And the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds, consistent with the language of the charter, would have the responsibility, consistent with the terms of those individual donations or bequests, to manage and control those, those trusts, and to distribute the income of those trusts in accordance with the terms of the trust. And of course, all of this ultimately goes to the treasurer, who has the fiduciary responsibility to perform the actual function of transfers and accounting with respect to these funds. But it's the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds that have the oversight of those miscellaneous funds. And, you know, this is not unique, I guess I'll say this as sort of my, my, my final words, and then I'll, I'll certainly entertain any questions that the board might have. This, the existence of this Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds, or Board of Trust Fund Commissioners, it goes by different names in different communities, it's not unique to Lunenburg. In fact, several of your surrounding communities that have charters, in some cases, similar charters to yours, have these boards. A number of cities have them. We represent the city of Pittsburgh, city of Pittsburgh has, has a Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds. I actually found, in, in doing some of our due diligence, I found a, a Board of Trust Fund Commissioners in the city of Salem, but, a ways from, from Lunenburg, but, but closer to me here in Newburyport. And they have a, a comprehensive website that provides a summary of who they are and how they were created. They were actually created through special legislation, as opposed through, to it, through a town charter. And they provide an explanation of what they do, and they give examples of the sorts of functions that are often performed by these boards. They will accept donations for various purposes, often general assistance purposes, and then they will issue awards, sometimes on an annual basis, sometimes on a quarterly basis, or even more frequently, often in different categories. For example, Salem has a general assistance category, and a scholarships category, and a fuel assistance category, to provide, to provide help for, for those in need within your community. And again, that, that speaks to sort of the general nature of the monies that these boards often have within their purview, as opposed to the much more specific trust funds that are left in the purview of conservation commissions, or cemetery commissions, or, or library boards of trustees. So that was our analysis. I'm, I'm confident that it's consistent with the language of your charter and what exists in Massachusetts general laws. And if board members have any questions, I'm certainly happy to, to answer them.
All right. Are there any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, so I just want to clarify, let's see if I'm getting all of this right. In terms of the conservation, the library, and the cemetery funds, the Board of Commissioner of Trust Funds has no authority over them at all?
That's correct.
Okay. So it just leaves these five miscellaneous funds.
I think that is consistent with the count that I had was five miscellaneous funds, correct.
So all of these funds essentially have a creating document, right? Which I think you mentioned can determine how the funds are managed and distributed? Is that correct?
They, they, they should. I guess is my, my careful, my careful answer to that question. So yes, I mean, certainly, there, there ought to have been, and most often, almost always, is documentation establishing the donation, the bequest. But I will say, in the context of the five miscellaneous funds that you referenced, we have, we had access to some of that. For example, one of these was a donation from the American Legion from back in 2013. Well, 2013 wasn't that long ago. It's just over a decade ago. So we have the documentation, it's only a decade old, it's very specific in terms of establishment of the fund and the purposes for which the, the money is to be, to be utilized. What often happens, however, with some of these much older funds, is that, that, the originating document can't be found, or it can be found, but it's not nearly as comprehensive as we would expect a legal document to be in 2025. Or there are some, some, some vagaries or ambiguities within the document that make it unclear. So those are challenges that are, are dealt with, and there is a lot of case law on that, even outside of the municipal context, where there's an effort in interpreting an older trust, even, again, in the private context, and the language can't be interpreted, and the courts have to be, have to be sought out for assistance in determining the intent of the, of the donor. That's not unusual.
Okay, understood. And I'll also leave the town manager in now too. So are we experiencing that issue of not being able to find any of these documents, or any sort of ambiguity with any of these funds?
Yes, so just for the public's clarity, because we're looking at a document in front of us that the public isn't seeing, so I just want to kind of name what these funds are, and what as of March 25th, the balance is of those funds, just so that everybody has a full understanding of what we're talking about. American Legion Poor, the fund had an ending balance of $12,489.53. J&amp;M Howard Sidewalk, $22,211.58. Worthy Poor, $22,887.22. gazebo restoration, $10,725.46. And Lunenburg Post 283, $8,690.14. We have been able to find two of the controlling documents. In talking to a former member of the trust commission, this has been a problem for a long time, and I think that, you know, folks will have to do their diligence to, to find those documents, and if can't, work with town council on how to distribute and disperse those funds in accordance to the minutes and information that we do have about those funds.
And to be clear, who exactly would be leading the search for those?
Well, I think that it starts with the treasure collector, who's already been working on it, but certainly if there are folks who are listening to this recording, and they were perhaps on the trust commission years ago, and there might be files in somebody's home, as was the case in oftentimes in boards and committees, where there wasn't a central office, and people were working as committees out of their homes. If folks have anything, it would be great if you could bring it forward. We could do research at the, or the trust commission could do research at the registry of probate. But I, I think that we'll have to work with council on what that looks like, and what would be necessary based on what we do have.
Okay, thank you.
So which two did you find documentation for?
Worthy Poor. And one of the legions, one of them.
Any other questions from board members? Okay. Well, since we do have town council here, and we have the Chair of the Board of Commissioner of Trust Funds here, if you'd like, I can invite you up if you have any specific questions for town council.
Sure, thank you. Hi, John Bowen, I'm 162 Highland Street, I'm the Chairman of the Trust Fund Commission. Adam, how are you?
Good, John, how are you?
Pretty good, good to talk to you again. So just for some clarification, I know that there's, there's some overlapping information that I had read in the statute with regard to conservation, library, and library and cemetery funds, as well as workers' compensation fund, where there is a lack of a sinking committee here, that there are portions of the Workers' Compensation Fund that comes under the control of the Trust Fund Commission. And I don't have the chapter in front of me, I mean, I can dig it up, but I don't want to take everybody's time to find it, I have it there on my phone. But I could send you something with regard to that. But my question is this, is that in, in Chapter 114, 25, it says that, and in Chapter 203C as well, it highlights perpetual care and cemetery funds as invested in trust accounts, of which are used to be able to benefit the town with regard to specific reimbursements that come back to the town. And I believe I had raised that issue with you before, but I believe that there is a little bit of contradiction there with regard to how cemetery funds are handled, as well as conservation. Library is quite clear. Library has their own private trust company, they run their own private trust fund board that they have within their purview per charter. But cemetery does not, and neither does conservation in charter. And I know that you said that we would default to the preemptive doctrine of Massachusetts general laws, and what it clearly says in the statute where there's the identification. And my question is, is that I think this requires a little bit more research, because I think that the overall benefit to the town when it comes to trust funds being invested and not being separated out is an asset by the funds being managed by one entity, as opposed to being managed by three entities, and where there is some conflict in Massachusetts general laws, where it does speak about the authorization of funds by trust fund commissioners, if there is a trust fund commission, that we basically say, you know, yes, this fits Chapter 114, Section 25. There's a couple other chapters there, same thing with conservation, that basically, that's the trust document that we review, and then we just say, yes, this fits into the conscript of that. we review, and then we just say, yes, this fits into the conscript of that. Let's authorize the fund. And that is how we, as a commission, have looked at these trusts. So, just out of curiosity, I'd like to know where, you know, where the case law is for that. Because you're saying the case law exists, but where's the case law that says that what Mass General Laws says trust fund commissioners are responsible, okay, for bequeathed or given, okay? Anything that's given to cemetery or conservation are bequeathed or given. So my question to that is, is basically, if it's bequeathed or given, and it says specifically that it is the direction of the Trust Fund Commission to be able to authorize the expenditure based on what the trust documents say, whether it's the declaration or specific identifiable information. This is where I'm basically going with that. And I just think that there's a little bit more to that, where this is an additional avenue of oversight that comes to the spending of expenditures. But again, like I had mentioned, 203(c) clearly talks about perpetual care and cemetery funds and the use of that, to be able to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck on the investment, outside of what the standard 20 list is that we've been on, which right now, I think Bartholomew and Company told us that we were, we were spending, we were spending most of our wheels in pharmaceuticals, which was a waste of time. And a forensic audit is necessary by Mr. Scullum Brini of the Budget Task Force recommended. So these are my concerns. And I just want to have some clarity from you, because I know, I know you have that clarity that you made.
We're asking questions.
Yes. I know you, I know you, I know you made that clarity, but I don't think that you have provided the evidence to that, because you said of a lack of evidence. And I'd like a little bit more information with regard to-
Mr. Bowen, enough. Let him respond.
Sure. So let me try and, a lot was said, so let me try and respond in sort of as much of a piecemeal manner as I can.
If you could just turn the volume down a little bit. My apologies. Go ahead, Adam.
That's okay. Is it okay now?
Yes.
Okay. So, to be clear, I've not cited to case law, except in the context of Boards of Library Trustees, where I said I found two or three separate cases that addressed the authority of Boards of Library Trustees. And it doesn't appear that Mr. Bowen is contesting that. What I did say was that there's actually a lack of case law. I expressed initial excitement that the language of your charter mirrors the language of state statute, hopeful that there might be some case law interpreting the state statute, and providing some additional guidance, which would be an easy resolution to my, to my research project. But I didn't find any, because the case law that exists was either, number one, it was quite old, number two, it was not on point addressing these very issues. And there wasn't, there wasn't any sort of meaningful number of cases interpreting, interpreting the statute in question. So I'm not relying on or citing the case law. What I am saying is that, while I appreciate that there are other statutes that address the holding, the expenditure, the investment of trust monies, and one of the statutes that you referenced is Chapter 203(c), and some members of the board, the select board may remember the reference to 203(c), because this was statutory adoption that occurred, I think it was a year ago, a year and a half ago, at town meeting, referred to as the prudent investment, or prudent investor statute. And what was explained at town meeting, and the adoption of that statute for purposes of certain trust funds, is that it provided, provided, and now provides, given that that town meeting vote did pass, it provides the town some greater flexibility with respect to its choices for the investment of trust monies. I wouldn't characterize the new choices as especially risky. To the contrary, they're, my understanding, based upon conversations I've had with not just your investment advisor, but investment advisors to other municipalities, is that they are quite conservative investments still. But they are, I guess, somewhat riskier than the traditional and very limited list of investment options for municipalities. And I don't, I'm not disputing that looking to that statute in an instance where the charter is silent, or other provisions of Mass General Law are silent, wouldn't make some sense. I think you could look to that statute and look for some guidance within the statute relative to expenditure, or investment, I should say, of trust monies. But when it comes to specific entities within a municipal government, and again, we're talking about a place to libraries aside for the moment, conservation commissions, and cemetery commissions, there are separate statutory provisions that address the creation of those entities, and the authority they have with respect to their monies, including monies that they hold in trust. And I've cited to those statutes, Chapter 40, Section 8(c), and the other statute, Mr. Bowen, that you just referenced, Chapter 114, Section 25. I'm not aware of the sort of inconsistencies or internal conflict you're referring to within Mass General Laws. To be clear, after we performed our analysis, just in an abundance of caution, and before we reported anything to the town, we did consult with general counsel for the Division of Local Services within the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, and got general confirmation of the analysis that I've sort of laid out for the board tonight. So, it does appear to us to be, to be rather, rather black and white in light of the research we've done, and the types of accounts. Again, it might be a different analysis if we were talking about a different board, commission, or committee, not a miscellaneous fund, but also not a conservation commission, or a Board of Library Trustees, or Cemetery Commission, that had monies. Well, we'd have to do the analysis for that individual board or commission or committee to say, okay, what's their enabling legislation? What does that enabling legislation say with respect to monies that they've received, whether it be monies in their possession through an appropriation from the general fund, or from the town, or it be monies that have been bequeathed, or donated to them? And if that statute is silent, it may be a circumstance then, where that silence means that we defer to the language of your charter, which places the authority for oversight in the hands of the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Costa. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Bowen?
No, that was basically the other question. I just wanted to have review. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. If there are no other questions for town council at this time, thank you, Adam, for coming in tonight. And I hope that clarifies things for the public and for the board as well.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay. Moving on, we have a joint meeting of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee to discuss the direction for the Town Hall and Ritter Memorial Building projects. So I will invite up the members that are in the room. We also have Mr. Blatt over Zoom as well.
Dave Blatt, Vice Chair of the-
Hey, Dave. You have some noise going on in the background, just so you know.
Unfortunately, I'm in a vehicle, and I'm going to try to, I'm going to have to say that kind of go on.
Okay. I can't tell if that's you talking, or if it's background noise, but we can't hear. And you guys are just going to have to turn your microphones on as well. We've had a lot of IT issues tonight. And since Dave is remotely, I don't know if he can call the meeting to order, right? Normally, you need someone in person to do that.
No, he can call.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Blatt, do you mind calling your meeting to order?
Sure. This is Dave Blatt, Vice Chair of the-
We, we lost you, Dave. What was that? Try again?
Hi, this is Dave Blatt, Vice Chair of the Building Reuse Committee. I'd like to call our meeting to order at 7:56 PM on Tuesday, the 14th.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Blatt. Well, I want to thank you guys for being here tonight, and for continuing to stick it on with this project. I know you guys have put in years' worth of work on this project, and it's been certainly frustrating at times. So I really appreciate you guys sticking with it, and I think it's going to take a lot of perseverance to continue pushing it forward. But this is a project that the town really needs to see done. It addresses really critical needs, so thank you for being here tonight. And, Mr. Blatt, I believe you guys have compiled some feedback that you want to present to us?
Sure. So I apologize, I had a little family thing today, and unfortunately, could not be there in person. So you don't get to see my multimedia PowerPoint presentation. Just wanted to talk about a few points that the group got together, and we talked about, that we found from this process, and that we would like to point out moving forward, as we move forward. The first thing is, is that when we, you know, we know we had this broader building, we brought a building to that, you know, that the price tag was more than we originally thought, or would like to have seen. However, we were very impressed with how well the town responded to it, and how close the, during this difficult time, financial times, how close the actual vote was during town meeting. So for that reason, we do feel that there is a lot of, you know, that this project has got a lot of good merit. And we'd like to have you guys talk a little bit about, you guys, and get your sentiments about things that we should look at moving forward. Some of the things that we found that we would like to talk, you know, that we found that we need to do is, the first thing is, is that we realize that there is a huge need to improve the working conditions and to consolidate the town government into a single building. The second thing that we found was that there, the two buildings in town, of both the Ritter and things, and there's a need to preserve these buildings, and that they should be with us and with the town for many, as they, that make them more ADA compliant, and that there is, you know, a definite need for that, as well as to improve, you know, efficiencies in the buildings, both, you know, energy efficiencies, to basically upgrade the buildings considerably. Felt that the, one of the problems that we ran into was, you know, as you see with lots of projects, with those of folks who have been in industry and things like that, is that we felt like the project might have ended up having a little bit of feature creep. In other words, that, you know, the original scope of the project was one thing, and then as folks got along, people said, well, why don't you, what about putting this in there? And what about putting that in there? And that might not have been the best thing to do, when we're coming to a limited budget, or kind of keeping the project under a certain budget, and things like that. The other thing that we found was that we really need to better, you know, involve the public. Even though all of our meetings were open meetings, and things of that, we still felt we had people who said, well, you know, this is the first I'm hearing about it, or other things. And until the presentation at Town Hall, most folks did not realize the real working conditions that people had. So, with that note, what we're really looking from you guys is to get some, you know, get some direction of what you really would like to see from a project, what you would like to see from, you know, from us as we worked on things. Because the other side of things is that we felt like, you know, the biggest, one of the things that goes on in this town is what's going on with the other buildings? And this, we, you know, do we, are we just looking at the Ritter and Town Hall, or is this something that you guys want us to look at, a bunch of buildings, and just talk, and come up with a plan for the town for, as we move forward? So, I'm going to kind of put myself on mute, and ask that you guys just, you know, give us a little bit of feedback about what you're thinking, and what you guys would feel should be the charter, if this committee does move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Blatt. Any other members of the committee want to say anything?
Well, I'll just say that, you know, we're working for you. So I think that's sort of the sentiment why we're here tonight. We're at, serve at the, thank you. Serve at the pleasure of your board. So we wanted to make sure we came here and reopened the dialogue. Sorry, it's really touchy.
All right, understood. I mean, I still want your feedback.
Yeah, no, I know. No, no, I know. But, but we feel like we're a little bit of an impasse here, like, where should we be-
Laura, can you just mute that and just use one?
Where should we be directing our resource, you know, our discussion and things? So, that's why we're here, just to have a roundtable discussion. I'm not saying it's one-sided, but I'm just-
Yeah. All right. Can I add to the, just a little bit to the conversation, too? Because at our last select board meeting, so I'm on both committees, but at our last select board meeting, we had talked about ARPA funds not being spent, and Lunenburg Municipal Building Design had come up, that it was $18,500 short. I mentioned it at our last meeting, and I reached out with David Blatt to the architect, and they had just recently sent out that invoice, so it should be fully spent. So there are no additional funds.
Right.
It was already, yeah, it was already sent. I have the email from the architect. But it was, I think the architect, yeah, planned on spending all the money, yeah. So, I just want to say, you know, you guys were incredibly close at town meeting. You were six votes away. So, I just want to ask, do you guys want to move forward with the same plan again in the fall? Do you think that's something you guys want to consider?
Well, well, I mean, that's the question there. Because we, you know, in a way, we have a brand-new superintendent that just started July 1st. And, you know, I'd like to, you know, what we have for a vision for how her administration worked, and what she expected, might be different than what she has for a vision of what she looks at things. So, I don't know if it's the best thing. And I also look at it as that, you know, there could be things to help lower the budget quite a bit. We, there is a big difference between wants and needs. And I think we want, we looked at wants on the committee, we ended up looking at wants more than we looked at as needs, more than anything else. And I think we, you know, having a better collaboration with you guys on the actual needs for the town, might make this even a more economical project, if I could say it that way.
So, I'd be interested in hearing any feedback you got after town meeting, why people voted against it, what they didn't like, what they want changed. Did you get any feedback?
You know, we got, I think we got it, we didn't get it towards the committee itself, but I think we got, you know, some of us got it as individuals. We got, we received feedback of just, you know, questioning whether the project was larger than it needed to be, you know, larger than it needed to be.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'll look at it as an example, my personal, and I'm just going to say this personally, like, one of the examples for me is that we were told that we had to make an accommodation in Town Hall for PAC. And, you know, our original plan was that PAC would occupy a good portion of the first floor of the, of the, of Town Hall. And, you know, that, that way, they can still have their studio upstairs, and that's where they mostly are. But, you know, it was thrown on us kind of late, that, no, we had to make accommodation at the new Ritter building for PAC. And, you know, that's a lot of square footage, that we look at, and if we look at dollars per square foot, that's almost that, that's just, you know, a half million dollars worth of building square footage that we're using for, that we're adding on for, I'm not sure what the reason is. The other side of things is that, if you looked at the report, it had all new furniture for everybody. And is that really necessary, that we have all new furniture for everybody in this building, or are some of the things that we have today usable moving forward? And that also, since if anybody's looked at what brand-new office furniture looks like, is cost-wise, is, was a huge expense as well, added to the project. To redo Town Hall, to make it safe, and to make it a building that will last for a long time, the numbers were not that bad. It was under, under $3 million to do Town Hall. And that, to us, is, you know, money well spent. But, you know, when you start adding in all the extras, it, the feature creep, this is where I mentioned with feature creep, it went up quite a bit.
Yeah.
And it might be karma, but I just got a cut from some rough word on this piece of text. So, I'm going to figure it's not karma. But so, watching, watching their meetings, there was definitely some interest on their, the board, the Municipal Building Design Committee's board, of moving forward with the, with the exact, to their credit, they were coming here to the board to get some, some guidance on that end. And, you know, you know, my position would be absolutely not, we should not go forward with that same original plan. So that would, that would be my, my initial feedback in giving them guidance from watching, watching their meetings. And, you know, without going down, you know, into the rabbit hole, you know, I do appreciate all the work that they have done, you know, both this committee and all the other iterations of the committees over the years. But, you know, I would look forward to a more collaborative approach between the select board and the municipal board, Building Design Committee- Board and the Municipal Board, Building Design Committee, and not really just leaving them out there in the lurch. And so, I mean, I do have, as I've said before, other comments that I'm willing, willing to get into, but I just, you know, for the point of this comment is that I, my recommendation, my individual would be like, certainly not to go forward with the, the failed plan. And that let's work, you know, the holistically collaborative, what all these power words are. But I think, you know, coming again from the, the various meetings, that their commitment and, you know, the, the feedback or the feel if they get from the community is, you know, a, a really thoughtful rehabilitation historic, of the historic buildings, Ritter and this building. And I think, you know, that seems to be the core focus and to their, the, the points made about the, the creep that may have been a big part of the problem. Because I, I think if we capture the needs of the employees and, you know, the, the lack of improvements the town has made to the buildings over the years, if, if we just focus on, you know, the, the core issues, all the while keeping in context this, this, this concept we hear so frequently about is long-term planning. And as, as we develop these plans and in, in creep does try to come, you know, reemerge, we have to consider TCP, we have to consider Turkey Hill, we have to consider PFAS that the water, water takers, the twenty-five-hundred water takers in town are confronting, you know, a conversation they're dealing with that ranges from, you know, thirty to fifty to seventy-plus million dollars to be divided up by those, those users, the stormwater utility fee that, that'll be coming up. You know, a lot of conversation about the Community Preservation Act and then overall the school funding. So we just have to keep all of those issues in, in, in mind.
So I don't know how you want to do this, but I, I have plenty of feedback to give you guys and suggestions, and I, I put it into three categories, if you will. One is the composition of the committee. You've lost some members and I'm not sure you've lost maybe more than I know for sure. The second part is I have some specific feedback on, on the plan. I agree, I don't think it should be the exact same that you bring forward again. And then some suggestions with respect to PR and education. Last year was so rushed, so last minute, that I, I think it worked against you and then getting caught up in the tsunami of the override and all of that, you know, I think Marshall Park was in the same boat. So I don't know how you guys want to do it, but I have a, a list of stuff that I'm happy to.
You can start if you want.
You want to do composition first?
Sure.
That's kind of just general housekeeping. So Mr. Scullumbrini attended all your meetings, was not a voting member. I think he should be a voting member. Or at least a representative from the APDC. I think he's been attending, I, I would, if I could make a suggestion as a rep from the APDC, I would, I would recommend Mr. Scullumbrini. I also think that the facilities director should be more involved. Now, he's also a resident of Lunenburg, so would he be a member-at-large member and vote or facilities director role? Vote, not vote, I, I don't care, but I think he needs to be involved and consulted as long as he is willing and able to do so. I have questions about the other members. So Brian is now our Select Board, so he replaced Michael Ray.
Laura replaced.
And Laura replaced you, so those are covered. I, I watch all the meeting, I, I watch like every meeting in town. So, but I've noticed like the last two meetings, you don't have a Planning Board member and one of your other members-at-large was not there. I don't know.
It is still Matthew Allison and Christina.
So they're staying.
Besides us, as of now, as of.
Like, have you confirmed that with them? Or you just haven't heard otherwise?
Well, I think the idea is there hasn't been a change in the, the members.
Okay, well, I would encourage you to confirm.
I know Christina recently had a baby and Matthew was.
I think it's important to have Planning Board representation as well.
Yes.
So that's the easy bit about the composition. If, if I talk about the plan design, I've, I've shared some of this feedback in the past, I don't feel like ACE belongs in, in the new Town Hall. I view that building, you know, that is, the Town Employees is where people go for certain, for building permits, you know, the idea is we bring all these things under one roof, you go to conservation, you go to building, whatever you have to do, all your business, you pay your taxes, all under one roof. I know that, that was, you know, the school wanted that superintendent, school committee, I don't know. As you mentioned, we have a new superintendent. I don't know how she feels. I know that the director of the ACE program has to be co-localized. But personally, my, my perception from where I sit, I'm not sure that director has to be co-localized with the superintendent in central office. The other thing that bothered me was this turning into just all meeting rooms. And for the town manager to have department head meeting, they all have to walk over here. They're all over there already, why, can you imagine walking over here and, oh, I left my notebook in my office, now I got to go, you know, it's just, that's not efficient. I, I would like to see a space in the new Town Hall that's large enough for department head meeting. It doesn't have to be a dedicated conference room, maybe some kind of multi-use room that serves as a conference room and something else, I don't know, that's where, you know, an architect to figure out or someone who works in this space. With PAC, so it is a town department, it is a very important resource, as I'll get to later. I don't like digging if we don't have to. I, I don't know, maybe it's just me being a worrywart, I don't know what we'd find and I, I just imagine, you know, cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. And I'm not sure, I have to go back and watch their presentation to us in terms of space. I'm not sure they need, 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 need the space they're asking for, because right now they're in TCP. I don't know what that space looks like. Do they have fifteen-foot ceilings over there?
They, they may be, but they certainly don't have what was being designed.
In the, in the basement. So, and I know, again, I don't remember everything that was wrong with going in here, all I remember was the creek. You do this building right, there should be no creek. Now, I don't know access, I remember some of access, security, you know, I don't know how much they're moving equipment in and out, you don't want them to have to walk upstairs with equipment. I, I, I feel like it could be addressed. Like you said, the booth is here. I, I would like to avoid having a basement and, and try to, you know, work with PAC to come to what is a reasonable amount of space and maybe it could be in this building. Or I don't even, I don't even want to know, I'll say this once, and Mr. Blatt is probably gonna, is, is probably gonna, I don't know, fall over, but Brooks House, is that an option for like ACE or something like that? I don't know. I'll just throw that out there. Okay, lastly, the, the third category of PR and education. I think you guys and, and Marshall Park as well, it was a, because of everything going on at Town Meeting, I think it was a mistake not to talk about our debt capacity and the timing of this, of these projects and how it, now is a good time to do something like this. I think everyone hears, oh, I, I mean, yes, I saw it all over Facebook, more money, money for this, money for this, it's, but it's different. And I think there's some education with the public that has to be done with respect to, and I know the Chair of the Finance Committee had, has, you know, already presentation ready to go. I think Michael Ray's videos and his pictures were great. It's too bad it wasn't earlier. But I think you can use those or maybe do them again, take advantage of PAC and do like just a short recording of, hey, here's what it's like to work in Town Hall and, and use those videos and here's, you know, look at the Clerk's Office, this is what the Ritter looks like. And what, there were three, oh, and PAC, PAC space. To have short video clips, because you know what, people don't come, they don't come to info sessions, Parks had info sessions, MBTA Communities had info sessions, Master Plan has info, people don't show up. But I run into people all the time saying, oh, I know you, I see you on, you know, on YouTube. People watch the recordings, they watch PAC. Let's take advantage of that. Even if you do have an info session and, you know, only a few people show up and it's recorded, I think people will watch it. I think the word will get out if you start it early enough. Even on social media, I know you posted like all the meeting and the agenda on Facebook, but to, to post the links to these little five, ten-minute videos showing what it's like. I mean, yes, you can offer tours too, but that require, that's an activation energy, get people over here and get somebody from town to take them through. So I think those are all of my, my key points, but I, I think we need to do something. We definitely, you guys have done a lot of work and, and people who aren't here preceded you have done a lot of work. We, we need to, to do something and, and it's so close, it's so close.
So I would agree with members McLeod and Mkey with most of what they said. The vote at, at the meeting was so close because of the presentation by Mr. Jeffries, and I think that was the education that people got, but it was still that uphill battle against the school funding and the override that, that really shut it down. So I could see going again in the fall, but then I look at the lack of support that we got from the APDC at Town Meeting, and I think that's what was missing too. I think having, again, having an APDC voting member and also a facilities director voting member, I think can make it a little bit better. I think there is a concern about having the, the Town Hall be open. I think a lot of people want to restore it, but it, it should be used or have more of It would be good to hear from the superintendent about ACE and I think little things like that, I think there can be some improvements in the design. PAC, I know that there was even a post on social media about PAC potentially in like the gas station down the street. Like, I would like to explore more with PAC leadership to see if there are buildings that they could use and maybe that saves some space to other town buildings.
Space and money.
But I think the PR education, we saw it with people who voted in the Town Meeting, they understood and they appreciated it, but it was that battle. And then once it got to the ballot, people didn't have that education, watching that video, watching the presentation, that's why it did so poorly.
Right.
So I think the education to the public could definitely help, but that was that challenge. The debt capacity also, I think that conversation and that presentation would have helped a lot too, and that could have got it over at Town Meeting too. My big concern and question I had is if the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee goes back to the, the table and works on this, where's the funding to make that new design?
Right.
That's my big concern.
I was hoping there was eighteen thousand left.
Mr. Scullumbrini, do you want to share any feedback? You've been pretty quiet.
I did. First of all, one of the reasons why I'm quiet is because I'm not a member of the committee. And I do appreciate Purnay's comment that there should be a representative from the APDC on this committee. I want to take exception to what Brian said. My comments in opposition to what was designed was never from my position as the Chair of the APDC. And I think I made that clear in my conversations. In fact, what I did say as a member of the APDC was how glad I was to see the project validate that both Town Hall and Ritter were great buildings to renovate. Because if you remember, back, I think in twenty-two or twenty-one, when we were talking about a thirty-five million dollar project for the town, both Ritter and Town Hall were left off the table because they were in such bad shape. And I think that we've proven through this process, two things. One is that these buildings can be renovated and two, the cost of renovating existing is always going to be cheaper than adding new square footage to the town. And my comments have, have always been focused on two things. One, scoping the project correctly. In fact, what I am glad that the town, why I am glad that the town voted not to move forward with, with the project is because we do have a new superintendent and she has different ideas about where the ACE program should be. And it might be in a building that got left off to the, to the side in the Brooks House. And I think that that makes so much more sense than having that ACE program in the second, in the lower level of the Ritter building. And thank God that we, the town didn't approve that because that would have been a mistake. And in fact, on January 8th, after watching the school committee on January 7th, I sent a note to the Chair of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee and said, whoa, we got a school committee that's really kind of uncertain as to how they want to handle the ACE program. We need to kind of stop, reconvene and, and have a discussion about this so that we don't design something that won't warrant support. And then, of course, the school committee, I think, made a, a decision that really made selling this at Town Meeting difficult to do because you had space, you moved the superintendent, you moved the ACE program to Turkey Hill. So my comments have never been, because I wasn't a member of the committee, my comments have never been representing the APDC, other than to say, these old buildings have value, they can be renovated fairly economically, and I think that we could move forward with these being a part of the town administrator redo that's so desperately needed. That's the other thing, is that I've been saying that we need to get the town manager, the staff, they need to be engaged in this process, we can't do this at an arm's length with them, and I think that that's a huge issue. The second major point that I have been trying to make, this goes back to debt service. We may be, we may be at a good time to do major construction work, but no one's convinced me of that because I haven't seen that data and I've been a part of this process since January twenty-twenty-two. So how can we expect the town residents to understand that when the people who are working this issue right now and, and, you know, we're right up against it and we don't really know, you know, what the debt service issues are? I think that connected to debt service is the town has lots of elephants to eat. It has a need to improve town administrative space, absolutely positively needs to improve. You shouldn't have to walk into a building like this with a town clerk's office, looks the way it does and there's all kinds of stuff in the way. I mean, those need to get addressed.
So we have a town, we have a town administrative function. This also goes back to a comment that Carter Terranzini made and to me, after he looked at the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee meeting where we saw the first concept from Taylor &amp; Burns, and he went, oh my God, what a horrible design that was. So, so we need to look at what's the priority for town administrative functions. I like Marshall Park, I wish we could get something done with Marshall Park. I'm a park guy, I used to be on a county commission associated with the Baltimore Parks in Ohio, and I know that those, those really have value to the quality of life of Lunenburg. We have a major, major elephant in Turkey Hill. You know, we have been talking about PAC as a community for how many years? At least five plus, because I've been, been living here for five years. You know, so we have that. And then we have another one that's kind of cropped up, and that's the redo of the intersection of the primary school on Route Two, you know, because, or Mass Avenue because of the problems that, that, that are down there. And one of these days, if we're not careful and we don't just, and we don't solve that problem, we might have a bus get hit by somebody. And that's the last thing that we ever want to do. And I think the school committee has identified that as a need. You know, so we've got these multiple, and then we have a fire, a public safety building, which probably doesn't need something, but we should kind of look at that, where that elephant will fit in the future. You know, and we have the, the Eagle House, you know, which is another little elephant that kind of needs to fit, you know, in the future. And then, of course, you know, every one of those things that we add to our tax rolls kind of looks like an override, you know, so, you know, we want to make sure that while we don't have to call it an override, we just have to have a vote for it, we want to make sure that we're not going to override the citizens to death. And I think that that's one of the things that needs to happen. So, you know, I have, I have provided information to the town manager that kind of summarizes what I'm describing now, and that is what should happen first. And that is what should happen first is that the town, it's a select board, you all should pray, help establish some priority based on what that debt load is for what, which one of these elephants comes first, comes second, comes third, comes fourth, which, oh, by the way, having attended a three hour master plan steering committee meeting last week was a topic of discussion is that, you know, members of the master plan steering committee are saying, where's the plan for town facilities? Not where's the plan for town hall? Where's the plan for Turkey Hill? Where's the plan for a redo of the intersection? I think that if we had a plan, if we said, this is what we're going to do first, this is what we're going to do second, this is what we're going to do third, the town will get behind that. You know, I think that they will. And I think that that's really what was missing. We need to make sure that we develop that comprehensive, you know, which elephant comes first, which comes fourth, which comes fifth, which comes sixth. So those are my comments. Renee, thank you very much for recognizing that APD should have been on the committee. But my comments, once again, Brian, they were never made as a member of the APDC because we never had a vote about what I was saying, which by the way, last week, last Thursday night, we did vote. And, and if this hadn't come up, Renee, I was going to stay for the correspondence from other boards to say that the APDC really wants a seat at the table as this committee moves forward. That's my comments.
Do you want to share your thoughts, town manager?
Is, if everybody else from both committees has?
I should probably state, I did speak with the superintendent. She's, we're still not exactly sure what our needs are for district offices. They moved to Turkey Hill two weeks ago. They're still setting up offices. There are not students in the building yet, so we're not in the full swing of things. I, I heard several mentions of the ACE program going in the Brooks House. I'm not going to speak for the school committee, but I am thrilled to hear of an actual use, like a concrete use for the Brooks House. Thrilled to hear about something we could put in the town could actually utilize that historic property that's been sitting there. Part, I, I wonder if part of the plan forward should be, like was mentioned, the needs versus the wants and paring it down and removing the school part from the town hall and then considering that would lower costs because Turkey Hill is going to need something in the future. And whatever happens in the future with Turkey Hill, could, we could roll district offices into that plan. But I'm hesitant to say exactly because we haven't discussed it as a committee and the superintendent needs a little more time. She has been there two weeks. And none of those weeks have involved ceilings being put together because they're currently doing work on Turkey Hill. So we do need more time, but we could, that is a possibility of going not back to the drawing board, but removing some things and having a very slim down Ritter building. That is a possibility.
Mr. McLeod?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Scullenberini for his comments. I think he's spot on and I found him to be a, you know, a, a source of hope in the process. You know, at the time I had no idea, you know, who anybody was, but certainly who, who he was. But we, we were two early ones who were kind of giving them, the, the committee some, some pushback. And I think he would be a perfect, he personally would be a perfect addition to the, the committee as Renee had suggested.
It's your chart, like we're here, you guys could add a voting member, correct?
Yeah, we can.
Like we can't, you, you can.
We can modify the chart if it was created by the select board.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's on you guys, so.
But it would be nice if you guys, you know, it was a mutual.
It was not foisted at us unwillingly.
Also, I call that, Tony and I have had our disagreements.
Yes, we have.
But we share a profession. Stick with them. No, I, I think that Tony has been probably one of the most steadfast participators since he joined in 2022, even, even of the standing committee members. So I, as a, to that point, I would fully support that. Also, I mean, we tried, we engaged with the facilities director on a number of occasions through the process, but that's not a bad idea. I don't know what he'd think about it. But maybe he doesn't have a choice, but I think making him a standing committee member isn't, uh, isn't a bad idea. Seems, seems like a good idea. This just must be me, huh? Everybody's mic turned off. I, I guess I'll also say that I, I was the first chair of this committee in 2019. We met a couple of times before COVID. We hired the first architect, I think, late February of 2020 and held one in-person meeting and then went all virtual and spent the next number of years really, really doing a lot of the work that we talked about tonight. It's just old now. We, we engaged town hall, we engaged all of the department heads, we engaged the school committee. We had lots of feedback from all of those people throughout that process to really refine that vision. Perhaps one of the weaknesses of the second effort was that we relied on, we, we sort of used that data, did a little refreshing, but we didn't go back and reengage that process when we hired the, the latest architect. We sort of just relied on that data, which is like five years old now. Town, town hall has changed, school department has now changed. And so, you know, I think that a lot of those comments that, that folks have, have raised about engaging, re-engaging with all those folks, I think is, is, is appropriate. I, I also went on record last week, we have a new town manager who I don't know, but I believe will be a very valuable participant and voice in this. She was drinking from a fire hose when this was being presented. So I don't think she had an opportunity to, to really digest it and certainly not the superintendent because she, she's 14 days into her, into her new job. So I think that all those things are really, really important. I have lots of other things I can say, but I, I think I'll just leave it at that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of comments. One is that I, I'm hearing that there's very much not a strong desire to return to town meeting with the project as is at the fall special. And I do want to say that a town meeting vote, while it can be close, you often see a very different vote at the ballot box. So sometimes you have a project that will pass overwhelmingly at town meeting and often will fail miserably at the ballot box. That's, so, so the town meeting vote, while it was encouraging, probably is, probably is not indicative of what the voters would do at the ballot box. With that said, I just want to say that I think spending too much time in kind of going back to square one, I think will lose a lot of momentum, effort, engagement. And so while I think maybe another year or half of a year makes sense, I wouldn't want to see this linger on for years.
That's good.
I would wonder if surveying those who did vote at town meeting would provide some utility, especially those who voted no. I think it's important to know for the no voters especially, is there anything that would get them to yes? Because there's going to be a certain amount of the population who is never going to get to yes, right? But for the other folks, what was it? The cost, was it the information? What was driving the no? And was the no a no to the project or just a no to no at this time? I don't have enough of information. Or no, I don't like this element. Or no, I don't like the cost. So I think that that would be important for the committee to drill down. I think that perhaps, and maybe this is even at the staff level, that I think that there could be some benefit of folks visiting other municipalities and looking at what their setups look like. I know I heard conversations about, I think it was specifically the land use department having a bullpen and that there was some reaction to a bullpen. And a bullpen is very common in a land use department. So I think that folks, even if they're staff, just seeing what other, how other towns function would have a benefit. And my last kind of question, comment, how, you know, Taylor &amp; Burns has done an incredible amount of work already and they already have, you know, I'm sure, I, I don't know what systems they use, but I'm sure they have base layers already drawn and, and making adjustments isn't the same as doing it from the start. Have there been conversations with them about what the cost potentially would be if we, I think we kind of hear where we're talking about changing the plan, at least generally, what that looks like? And if those conversations haven't happened, perhaps they could, because I think it makes a huge difference if we're talking about a $20,000 increase versus a $200,000 project. So I think just to know what that increased cost for a redesign would be, would be really helpful for folks.
I actually did have that conversation with Taylor &amp; Burns and I had it in January. And when I called, you got to understand my background. I, I used to work for the United States military and chain of command is everything. And the first thing that I said to, to Robert Taylor when I got him on the phone was, I am not the chair, I am just a citizen who's on a committee. And if you want to hang up, feel free to do so. So we, so he says, no, he says, let's have a conversation. I says, good. So we talked about the whole issue of ACE being in town hall because I don't think anybody really thought that that was heading in the right direction. And I said, could we look at a redesign with ACE not being there? And he said, yes. He says, we could. He says, there's money to do that, not enough money for me to give you a full-blown engineering cost estimate associated with a different concept. He says, but we have to know right now. And I says, I agree. So he, at that point in time, I think he was thinking that there was still, we hadn't burned all of the money. You know, we'd gone through two iterations and that was one of my concerns is that we may have burned up all of the money except for a few bucks. Cause we did have our presentation in February with the select board. And he said, no, he says, I think I could get that to you. You know, so I think going back to Taylor &amp; Burns and saying, let's have a conversation about what a redesign, a re-scoping might look like, you know, with, with the idea that now ACE won't be in. I think that's not a bad thing. But I got to tell you, I've worked with architects. I've, I've spent millions of your federal tax dollars with architects and I've worked with better architects. You know, so while we might get some information, I'm not convinced that they got it, they got it right the first time. I'm not sure they'll get it right the second time. Now, that's just Tony Scullenberini's two cents worth, but it's based on me spending millions of dollars doing architectural work and hiring architectural firms.
All right. So it sounds like we want to modify the charge to include representation for APDC and also facilities, right? We're all in agreement on that? Okay. And I think it kind of sounds like we're all sort of at least in the right direction here where we like the plan, but we want to modify the scope a little bit, right? So the ACE program, we want to explore putting that in the Brooks House potentially. Doesn't belong in town hall. What else have we talked about? PAC, maybe in this building? Like what do you guys think about PAC specifically in this building?
This is made for PAC.
Yeah, I mean, they're already here.
They're already.
I know.
You know, the other thing that, that I, I, I might get in trouble with my architectural preservation tissue commission members, but you guys need to be down on the first floor, you know, not up here. And then let's have PAC up here. Now that means you'd have to have an elevator because they got a lot of heavy equipment. But that man chair thing back there, it doesn't work anyhow or right there, it doesn't work right anyhow. You know, so this is where PAC could be. No digging, you know? I completely agree with that too, Renee. Is it putting them in the basement? That was like, like insane. You know, so I think PAC could be here. And then you're, now you're using this building every day. There's not a question of who's in the building. Somebody's in the building every day. And then you have the meeting rooms for downstairs for, for you all and the planning board and everybody else that has a need for meetings. So I think the PAC could prosper in this facility. We can move some of the historic stuff like that and that downstairs. You know, we could, we could move some of the, the, the ceiling downstairs, which by the way, if you're going to renovate the building and upgrade the coach, you got to do that anyhow. You know, you got to take some of the stuff out of the way so that you can put sprinklers in this building, you can upgrade the electric. You know, there's a, there's a fuse box back there by that, that panel. You can't have that, you know? So that means that that has to get moved anyhow. So move it downstairs and then our seniors who come in here don't have much of a challenge to, to come to a select board.
Right, our meetings will actually be accessible.
Yes, and then you all can get off to stay if you've been wanting to do.
I was just thinking that the stage is very intimidating. It's like half you guys are up there judging down on people and half elementary school play. I think it's best to do it to have you guys elevated and, you know, at the end of a room without it being so, so very high up. Also, yeah, the accessibility issue is a huge one because I was thinking we, we're going to have to put a lift in this building no matter what because we're not designing spaces that are not accessible to people. However, if the power goes out in the middle of a meeting, things like that, it's just far more accessible to have it downstairs and then there's going to be less of a demand on the lift.
I will say one thing that I've heard from people is that they would prefer it to just be on 30 School Street, further in and not exactly, you know, as far out on Mass Ave as it would be. I'm curious what the history of that decision is because I'm sure you guys explored that at some point, right?
This is why there isn't an APDC rep on this committee. Because the person who was the chair was a staunch opponent to demolishing 30 School Street.
Okay.
And, 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 you know, I would, I personally, I think 30 School Street could have made a great senior housing facility. And I've seen that all over the place. And our interim town manager, Carter, had actually worked on a project like that at his previous place of employment.
I know two developers that made a run at that property.
Yeah.
And it just didn't, it just didn't work. But anyway, I think that the history with using 30 School Street goes back to the Tape Study back. Tape Associates was the architect that we used to, when we built the new middle high school. And I, I can't remember exactly how they got involved in the building reuse committee. I wasn't involved then. I was involved in the municipal building, in the middle high school project, but not in the reuse at that time. But they did a study that looked at several options, one of which I think was a standalone building at 30 School Street. Why that wasn't advanced, I guess, I, I don't have it square in my head and it's probably a pretty long story that I don't know we'd have time for anyway. But I, I guess, I think that the plan that we, that this committee brought most recently was in response to something that, that Tony mentioned earlier, was that the previous plan when we were looking at TCP, when our charge was really just limited to TCP, there was definitely the sentiment that, well, what the heck are we going to do with it? We already have, I think at the time, we still had 30 School Street standing vacant. And then, you know, now we're going to have two more buildings standing vacant, which no one, by the way, wants to neglect because they're really historic. No one disputes that Ritter and, and town hall are historically significant. So I think that's why this plan was developed because we, we saw the need to consolidate town offices in a manner that was at least attempting to be cost sensitive. So the idea was to use as much as we could with Ritter, add on as little as possible. I understand that when you look at the massing of the proposed building, it doesn't look that way, but we were using existing square footage in the Ritter and adding on, right? So I think that instead of building a whole new building over and, over and, so I mean, I think that, that might be as simple as it, you know, as a answer as I could give you tonight, but I'm, you know, I'm sure it's a much more convoluted answer. There's probably many other people maybe in this room that have more of a, a history on that than me. But there's been lots of permutations. Of course, your previous iterations of your board did surveys. Of course, your previous iterations of your board did surveys, um, public surveys of what we should do with 30th School Street. Should it be green space? Should it be, um, town, I think you, you even had Town Hall in there. Should it be senior housing, all this kind of thing? And I think, uh, the sentiment was, was green space in some capacity. I think that was, that emerged as one of the. So there's been just a lot of information floating around there on different iterations of this project. And I'm sure I didn't answer the question very effectively, but that's a little bit of a best uh, recollection for me, anyway.
That's fine, I thought I'd ask. Uh, but I also think, you know, there's benefit in having that one consolidated building, right? With the connection between Ritter and the Town Hall as well, so.
Um, David, are you still on?
Yes, I am. I do set myself on good, so.
Okay, um, will you get in touch with the architects to ask out to, with Taylor and Burns to ask about a second go, I guess?
Dave, David, it's Greg, I could do that if you want. I had a relationship with them through the process, I think.
Well, so, here, I have to agree with Mr. Scoll. I, you know, I was a member of the committee, I don't know, that enthralled with what they ended up. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, since talking, um, I look at the Ritter building itself, the original.
Oh, I think he just dropped.
Yeah.
Oh, he's right there. He's muted, hold on one second.
He's unmuted now.
Yep.
I got you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Sure. So I don't know how from what, where I got cut off there, but anyway, I look at it as that I'm not, I wasn't that excited about what the architects ended up doing, personally. And I do believe that as a group, it's, you know, I, I, I mean, personally myself, I've designed several houses and some, and have done this for many other people. I believe that I can do a piece of pa, you know, that the group could have done a piece of paper thing and done some looking that way that would have done the town a better justice. So as much as I believe that the architect has a lot of information, I'm not sure if they fully understood what a, you know, the historic, of preserving a historical building, what that really meant when it came to Ritter. So I'm happy to have, you know, Greg, if you wanted to, to reach out to them. However, I do believe that as a group, we, we, we need to, I, I, with the, with the direction of the select board, we need to really think about what, what the building is going to have and what the building should, should be at this point. I, I agree with the idea that, um, you know, the second floor of Town Hall is an amazing space for PAC. And why not use it that way? And I, and that would have, you know, that, and that there, I do agree also that there needs to be some space in Town Hall for people to meet. And whether that's a multipurpose space or whatever, I do believe that that could be done. You know, whether, you know, if you need like groups of up to 10 people, a group of up to 10 people, that's all the space you would need. So I'm not sure we got what we were really looking for, but, but once again, I believed everything got condensed into a very short time period and that's, and we got what we could get at that point. Did that make any sense?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I would like to still see the connection with the, the architect. I think it's going to be a better selling point too, to the citizens.
Sure. But we don't lose anything by asking the question, how much it's going to cost, so we might as well do that.
Okay.
You, you don't lose anything by asking them questions. But I'm going to give you one example of why they're not on my top 10 list. The first iteration of design we saw, the architect put the school superintendent, who is our highest paid town employee at the time, in the, in the lower level of the Ritter building. And no one, no good architect should ever put the highest compensated employee in the lower level of a building like the Ritter building. And, and I, when I saw that, it was like, oh my God, you know, they don't get it. So that's just an example of why I don't think, I mean, I, we can get data from them about costs, you know, like a re-scoping cost, but I don't think it would be in our best interest to bring them back.
Okay, well.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question to Mr. Roy, uh, where this is your line of work somewhat tangentially. Where we spent about $185,000 with Taylor and Burns, I would imagine there's some tens of thousands of dollars for a redesign, but under 100, some tens but under 100. If, if we went to a brand new architect, would we, is there some of this architect's work that could be reused by another professional? That we're not into this for another 185 with a new designer? Because I think if we're starting, I mean, I think if, if we hadn't already spent $185,000 with Taylor and Burns, I think we could be having a conversation about whether or not they're our favorite architect or not. But I, I feel like we're 50 feet into the woods here on this one.
Uh, thanks.
You're welcome.
Not to put me on the spot or anything, right? So just to be clear, I'm a civil engineer, but I, I, I do dabble in the space, uh, like my friend here. Um, I think my over and under for asking Taylor and Burns to do analysis of that when you first were popping this around is you're probably, they're probably going to tell you 75K, plus or minus, I'm guessing. Um, I don't know that a new firm would have to completely reinvent the wheel, but, uh, particularly if they have the, share the same opinion that, that Tony does with the quality work or, or have questioned the same type of questions, they're probably going to want to do a lot of it over again. Um, so I don't know that it's going to be 180, but you're probably going to spend a lot of it, I bet. You know, I, I think that most firms will want to take a good, clean pass at it.
I agree with that.
But, you know, we could certainly ask some, I mean, we, I know some people in the field and see what they think. I know some architects that would candidly give me some opinion on that, that do municipal work. So we could, we could try to get some data on that and see. Because, yeah, any, anything we do, I mean, my sense is even if it's 75K, this is a town meeting proposition, correct? So I mean, we have some time to put this together.
Yep.
Um, although we all know that time passes quicker than we'd like. Um, but, uh, yeah, we, we can, you know, we, we can, I mean, we don't, we don't lose anything by asking the question from Taylor and Burns. Um, so unless there's objection to doing that, we can, we can do that. And we can, uh, I can ask some questions for some people that I know and see what, you know, what the answer to that question is in particular.
Thank you.
Okay.
My concern is, at this point, if we go to another architect, that will be the fourth iteration of this. Well, so we've, we did TCP renovation. Then we did TCP brand new on the site of TCP. Then we did this plan that just failed. And as it feels a little better going back for a modification of an already existing plan than it would be to spend another large sum of money on what would end up being a fourth plan. We're, we're throwing a lot of money at, at these plans. And I know why, I understand the history of it, um, but it doesn't feel good. No, it, it feels, that's a lot of money. So that would be why I would go towards Taylor and Burns.
Yeah, I feel the same way, so.
I, I will say, I, I don't, and no disrespect to the, the folks that have their opinions. I personally want to go and, I actually liked the plan. I, uh, and I was a pretty outspoken supporter of it through the process. And even as, as recently as last Thursday while we met. Um, I still like the plan. Um, and I didn't get any feedback from towns, townspeople that I talked to saying that they hated the plan. That wasn't the feedback that I got. The feedback I got was, well, you had bad timing.
Yeah.
Um, the schools had a $2 million shortfall and, uh, Marsha Park was asking for $12 million, whatever. You know, it just, those, that's the kind of feedback that I got. It wasn't that, um, that it was a bad plan. Um, that doesn't mean that it was a good plan. I'm just saying that personally, I didn't think it was that. And I didn't think that, and I didn't get that feedback from folks. I certainly didn't talk to everybody though, but I'll just leave that there.
I feel like it's really close.
Yeah.
Like, I think, I think it's a price tag and I think some of the changes will reduce that price tag.
Mm-hmm.
At least that's my hope.
And I think if there's a plan for the schools, I think that gets more support too.
If we're going to go in a direction, would you prefer we still try to have a lower cost all encompassing plan? Or would you be more geared towards very cheap, get, get this done at a price point that the town will actually vote for, make it as cheap as possible? Which, which would you prefer? No, it's got to, it's got to have longevity. Okay.
And I think honestly, with, with the context that we've talked about at town meeting, the fact that it was so close means, you know, I, I would expect if the price tag was seriously an issue, it would have been resoundingly defeated at town meeting and it wasn't. So yeah, I think we can cut down the scale a little bit, maybe make it a little less expensive. But, you know, I don't think it was interpreted as being wildly too expensive.
And also, sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I agree with what the town manager said too, with surveying, surveying, get, get the people who were close. What's, what's their yes? What's their point that gets them to say yes?
And I was going to say, um, that I shared the opinions that were, that were expressed about, uh, disappointment that we didn't share the financials in the presentation. I mean, we, we needed to do that and we didn't.
Well, I thought that should have been done even before town meeting, because I.
No, and, and there isn't, and I don't think there's anybody on this committee that, that wished we didn't do, have more time to do more public outreach.
Well, now you know.
And it's, and it's not the, um, it, it, it's not to say that the public outreach that we did, Brian did a lot of work on social media and things like this was, was bad. It's just, I think everybody would, we wished we had done more, for sure. Um, but, um, my point was to say that if we had, I think, if I understood in talking with Mr. Menard, um, we, we had the, the, this project fits into the plan, even if you put some numbers at Turkey Hill.
Yes, yes, yes.
If we had made that presentation, you know, I think it, it would have gone a long way. And we still have time to do it, but we're running out, I think.
Right. I'll, I'll tell you some comments I heard, um, where that people saw the price tag but didn't believe it and thought it was going to be even higher. Like, yeah, it's, what was it, 20 something? They were like, it's going to be 40. I, I don't know, I don't know how you would dress that.
You know, I think one of the biggest issues that we face, and this is why this, this may be the fourth iteration. Um, I've said this before, before this body. To have a successful project, you have to have a good builder, a good designer and a good owner. Leunberg has not been a good owner. And I think that that's the reason why. So just from my short history of five years of being here, the first, the first thing that the owner said was, hey, we got this place called TC Passios, let's see what we can do with it. Forgetting Town Hall and, um, and the Ritter. And then we started working on these two buildings. We finally agreed with that. But we never really said, how many square foot do we need? And, and that's like the basic thing that the owner has to decide. Like, if you're going to buy a house, you don't say, hey, I want to go buy a 5,000 square foot house. You know, when you can only, when you know that you can only afford a, a 2,000 square foot house. And, and the, and the town hasn't, hasn't really done, done that. And then going back to this disconnect between the people who are going to work in these town administrative areas, we had hardly any conversation with them while this committee met from September through February. Hardly any conversation. And those are the people that really helped define what does the owner want and what does the owner need? In fact, Carter is the one who come up with the bullpen language, you know? And he came up with that after he saw the first design iteration. And he went, oh my God, you know, we don't have enough people to have private offices. We have to have a bullpen, you know? Which is, which is one of the things that the owner should have said to the architect when we first brought them on board. Is to say, you know, we want bullpens, you know? And we would have known that had the owner taken the time to sit down with staff and say, well, what do you guys want? What do you ladies want? And I think that that's, you know, if, if we start this process again, with just trying to nibble on scope and get to a point where we think we're going to have something that the town, that the town would support, I think it'll fail for two reasons. One is you've got to come up with a farm, you've got to come up with a firm square footage, like when we talked about this, you know, this addition, it was a 4,000 square foot addition. It ended up being 14,000 square feet. You know, so the first thing you got to do is have some discipline to decide what does the owner want and what can the owner afford? And, and then I think that you'll be able to start the process. I, I don't like the idea of hiring an architect for the fourth time either, but I'm here to tell you, you get what you pay for. Always, 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 always. And I think that if we kind of say, well, you know, they kind of have these drawings and they kind of know this, they didn't get it right the first time. And there's no reason to believe they're going to get it right the second time, especially if we're not a good owner.
So, so Tony, I do have to say something on the one, one point there. I think, when it came to the new architect, we, we relied on the information that was provided by the folks who looked at the TC Passios, who went to talk to all the departments and there was conversations with departments. However, I do agree with you that the owner never went back and said, okay, this is what the departments said they wanted. And we really reviewed what they said they wanted versus what they were going to get. But we relied on the ar, the original architect of TCP to do all that work for us. Shame on us, but that's, and that's the information we ended up giving to the second architect, the folks for the, for the Ritter and the, uh, and Town Hall. We gave them that same information and say, here, go with this. And because this is what we've done so far. And I do agree though, that the owner in the end should have been the one reviewing that with the departments and saying, why do you need this? Why do you need that? Um, versus just taking, taking the interviews of the architect at, at its word.
But I'll add that that's one of the reasons why this second, or this, this recent iteration was 180,000 and not 240, like it was the first time.
Right.
But I just want to be clear that, to Tony's point, yeah. You, you add in those things, you're going to pay for it.
David.
I'm not saying we shouldn't, but.
David, should we go back and take another, before we've, well, we should get a cost from Taylor and Burns and then other ones, but should we go back and take a look at the space requirements and take a very hard look to separate out needs versus wants again?
I, I believe so, because as we, we know, as you've heard it and different things that has been mentioned, now, the idea of each department having their own space is a nice, nicety. But the fact of shared space does allow for more, a lot more flexibility as things, as departments shift and as we, as, as needs shift. So, you know, there's one thing for them to say, I need this much space. It's another thing for us to say, hey, by the way, this is the, you, you're going to get that space, but this is the way it's going to look. Not individual, you know, maybe not as individuals, maybe as a group, per se. Walls, walls cost money, to, to say the least.
The, the town manager also mentions visiting other town halls and I'm intrigued by that. I would like to also see how other towns are doing it, uh, and observe their space needs and how they're utilizing space compared to us or what we're asking for in a newer build.
You know, Laura, one of the things that I've said is that in the two years plus that I was, from January 2022, since I've been on this committee, the committee never once looked at all the buildings that we were talking about. We never walked around, and in fact, the only, the only time I ever saw this building was when Taylor and Burns came out to look at it to start their design work. And, and I think it's good for us to have an idea as to what other towns do. But I think that it would have been really helpful for us all to look at the buildings that we have. And we didn't, you know, and it's kind of like, how did that happen? You know, we, and then we could have, we could have, we could have kind of built off of each other and said, hey, you know, we could have had maybe a more robust discussion because we went over and looked at the PAC space as a committee in TC Passios and said, well, what about you guys being on the second floor of Town Hall? You know, and then we wouldn't have had that wild, wild curve ball, you know, thrown in January of, okay, let's take a basement so we can put PAC in there, because PAC's important.
Is it easier for you if we come as a group or would it be easier if we came one at a time?
Well, I think the nice thing about coming, oh, let me say this two ways. The nice thing about coming as a group is that you can post it as a meeting and you can discuss and deliberate while you're going through. The nice thing about not doing. The nice thing about not doing it as a group is that you don't have to post it as a meeting, and you can go in pairs of twos and not have it be part of a meeting. So, in terms of disruption, don't worry about that, like, because it's, there's only maximum, what, seven if we add an additional, so I'm not concerned about the disruption of the offices.
All right, I'm coming either way, because I think that needs to get done. I don't know how you guys want to.
So, you can file that a little bit under what I said earlier about maybe one of the weaknesses of this new approach was to rely on old data. I mean, I think, I know I've been in all those spaces, so I think maybe there was an underlying assumption that we were relying on that assumption, which we probably shouldn't have done. But that's valid, it's valid concern, Tony.
All right, so we have a couple of action items, so we can modify our charge tonight, I'm okay with that. So, what we can do is modify it to include representation from the APDC. How should we handle the facilities? Should that be a voting member, or is it something that's actually in the composition?
So, I wouldn't want to, I'm hearing this tonight for the first time, right? This is a, an employee who has a life outside of work with young children, so I wouldn't want to commit him to night meetings without talking to him first on that one.
Right, okay. So, I'm okay with just doing the APDC tonight, and then also, I guess, authorizing the committee to explore housing the ACE program in the Brooks House as well. What do you guys think about that?
Do you want us to come up with plans for that and a cost estimate? Because that's going to take money.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think that if we are talking about re-scoping, and we have to do that anyways, I think that it is perhaps prudent to wrap the two projects together into one borrowing. You are already doing a borrowing for the ACE program here, just because it's in two buildings doesn't mean we can't still wrap it under the same borrowing. I would be concerned that if we don't do it at the same time, that one gets lost.
But don't they need to check with the superintendent first?
Yeah, we need to scope this and get a plan and then work the plan.
We're going to need some time there, just because everything is very new.
The other thing that just occurred to me, if we increase the size of the group, quorum, will that become an issue? Can we do what they did for Master Plans Steering Committee and reduce the quorum?
Yes, we can. So, we can actually set the quorum ourselves because we're the ones that write the charge, so.
Because you guys now have, like, you've already met twice since town meeting, which is, I mean, you went like a year, not, Laura wasn't even on there, but the committee went like a year without meeting, and I feel like now you have momentum, and I don't want that to stall because of quorum issues.
So, how many members total are we?
There's seven total.
Seven.
With.
So, if we add one, it would be eight.
Make it four.
Quorum four.
And in actuality, that's, if you go back and look at the meeting minutes, that's probably where we were almost with 90% of the meetings, four people present, come in and go.
We're seven right now without APDC?
Yes, it was seven. Renee has the list up.
Yeah.
Oh, right. So, it's.
Oh, Finance Committee, sorry, I got it, yeah, yeah, okay, I got it. So, that would put us at eight and.
Finance, planning, and then Member at Large.
A natural quorum would be five. That doesn't seem too unrealistic, I don't know.
I'd like to see it stay at four. I mean, that's, that would make life easier.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make the motion to modify the charge of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee to include representative from the Architectural Preservation District Commission, to modify the quorum to four members, and to authorize the committee to explore housing the ACE program in the Brooks House.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Just a question, would we be limiting his ability to, Mr. Scullimbreeney's ability to express his opinion if he's representing the APDC?
No, he would be a full member of the committee that is there representing.
Also, good luck ever.
I'm just wondering if he was just a member at large as opposed to.
No, he would be a voting member, so he would be fully on the committee.
Well, a member at large can be a voting member.
I think the question was that if he's, that Mr. Scullimbreeney has a lot of thoughts, and that, and that some of those may not be the same thoughts as the other members of the APDC, am I right?
Oh, I see.
And that, and that if he is the representative of APDC, he may not be able to express all of those thoughts, as opposed to being a member at large.
But we could say the same for.
I would say the same, yeah, for both of us, yeah.
Right.
It's a one position.
I think that there might be, there might be an occasion where someone would say, well, we don't want to see the, you know, select board room get changed, and that'd be a voice from the Architectural Preservation District Commission. First of all, we don't have the authority to do that because it's an interior renovation, and the bylaw doesn't include that, you know? So, I think there's ways of dealing through that.
Very good.
And then the other thing is, if there is a difference of opinion, better that it comes out in conversations as committee members, rather than in front of everybody at town meeting. That's how you, that's how you get support, is to say, we talked about that, and now we're going to move forward.
One other thing, not to put words in your mouth, but, and not to take anything against Tony, because I think they already foregot, they already voted on it, but you shouldn't vote to appoint Tony.
Well, I was going to, I was going to just say that.
You should, you should make a motion to include a member of the Architectural Preservation.
Isn't that what you said?
That is the motion.
And that's how we voted on it. It wasn't to make me the member.
Good.
You know, I'll bring that back to the.
To be clear, they're going to have to vote to, like, someone, maybe it will, maybe it won't.
Can I ask for one modification that we explore, moving the ACE program to the Brooks House or another, or a different space, just so that we're not locked into that in case, because I don't know what the school committee feels about that, or the superintendent needs more time, like I said, it felt very awkward asking her on her.
Do we need to call that out specifically? Because we didn't call out PAC, looking at PAC space.
Looking at, what do you mean?
Can we just make a general motion of taking our feedback and, you know?
Yeah, I don't think there needs to be an ACE or PAC specific change.
You've already broadened the scope of the, you already broadened the scope of this committee past the TCP building, I think, last time we modified this charge.
Okay.
So, I don't think you necessarily need to do that, in my opinion.
I agree.
Not to say.
No, that's fine. I will modify my motion to only include the representation for APDC in the quorum as four members.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you guys so much, this was helpful, and it was nice getting all this feedback. Thank you, I know that's.
Thanks for coming in and waiting around and.
I know.
Thank you for holding the meeting till I got.
Yeah, well, thank you guys so much for coming in tonight.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee at 9:16 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. I can't see who's on, that's my, my thing, so.
I'll roll call Dave, Dave Blatt.
Aye.
Laura, I can't pronounce your last name.
I was waiting for the attempt, Brzezowski, yes.
And Brian Leighton.
Aye.
And an aye for me.
Excellent. Thanks, guys, I appreciate all the help and support.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Excellent.
All right, we're going to move on to annual select board appointments, and we have two people here tonight. I know, sorry, these meetings went a lot longer than I thought, and we also had quite a late start because of our IT issues, so I will invite up Kim Muzzi first.
Hi, Kim Muzzi, 659 West Townsend Road.
Welcome back. So, I believe you attended one of their meetings, how did it go?
I did. I enjoyed it. It was enlightening, because I didn't know much about the agricultural committee, and seeing what they're talking about and trying to plan was something I was interested in.
Great, all right. Well, any questions for Kim?
Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you for having me back.
Yeah, of course. All right, so I'll make a motion to appoint Kim Muzzi to the Agricultural Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2029.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, you will have to get sworn in.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's the term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Well, then, okay.
It's a short term.
Oh, so this one would be, oh, okay, my apologies.
Well, and then, because the terms are staggered, so this is an empty term that's been vacated, so then the next appointment would be a three-year term.
Yeah, my apologies. So, okay, never mind. I will move to appoint Kim Muzzi to the Agricultural Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, my apologies, you will have to get sworn in, like I was saying, so you'll just have to visit the town clerk, she's downstairs, and you can reach out to the chair, as I know you have been talking to her for more information.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and I believe we also have Mark Muzzi here as well, too.
Hi, Mark Muzzi, 659 West Townsend Road.
And so, did you?
So, I attended Stormwater Task Force, which was enlightening, and I got to watch a YouTube video on PAC, because unfortunately, the timing didn't work. So, I think I'm going to go with the Stormwater.
Okay.
Don't be excited or anything. It's going to be very interesting and entertaining, to say the least, so.
Oh, I don't know. I'm nervous.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just trying to find when the term expires here, we don't have it in our spreadsheet, so hold on one second.
Oh, there's no terms online, it's just, it's for the project duration.
Oh, I see, okay.
For eternity.
It's for life.
Okay, well, with that, then, I move to appoint Mark Muzzi to the Stormwater Task Force.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. You will also have to get sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And we have a meeting next week.
Thank you both for waiting. Okay, let's keep going through these appointments. So, we have the appointment of select board member to the Master Plan Steering Committee. So, Amanda is experiencing some health challenges, it's nothing too serious, but it does require that she scale back her involvement in the town, so she has asked that we vote for a new replacement for the Master Plan Steering Committee. Is anyone interested in doing this?
Now, is that like an actual voting member, or more of like a liaison?
No, it's an actual member of the committee. I'll do it if no one's interested.
I mean, that's basically where I fall, I mean, it is a, it's a lot, you know, all the various assignments and stuff, but I did, I did actually attend their last, last meeting, so another awkward silence.
Do you want to do it?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay. I move to appoint Glenn McLeod as the select board member to the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, and then to the town manager, we have two resignations to acknowledge, the police officer Jeffrey Hill and conservation agent Sophie Doro. If you'd like to speak to it.
Oh, well, you know, people resign for all different reasons. Mr. Hill is joining the state police, unfortunately, great addition to them, but a loss for us. And that's.
Yep, fair enough. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to thank Officer Hill for his service to the town, he's been before us on a couple of different cases that were related, and he was always very professional and thorough, and like the town manager said, it will be a loss for us, but I congratulate him on his new job. All right, town manager report.
Okay, so a lot to go through. I, in talking to council, I said, if I don't have an actual update about the Flat Hill Road Bridge at the next select board meeting, I'm going to be in trouble. So, we have not, we don't have an agreement reduced to writing, but council is working on, right now, we have an agreement in substance. So, Kenefek has performed some prep work already, and they are requesting payment for that work, which we have agreed that we will pay that work, pay for that work. Within one week of payment, we are requesting through this agreement that they will install an eight-foot-by-20-foot plate over the existing pipe culvert at their cost and reopen the road at no additional cost to the town. Work will resume in the fall with a December 31st, this is 2026, it should say 2025 date for substantial completion. And why not final completion? Well, the end of this project is going to likely be when the temperature drops and the asphalt plants are no longer operating, so due to the hot asphalt plant availability, town will agree to a final completion date of May 29th, 2026. This has, I know that this has caused substantial concern for those who have to travel in that area every day, and we have worked our best to get this contract back under, under control, and I think we're there now. Page Street is closed from Flat Hill Road to Shirley Town Line from today, July 15th to August 5th. The road is open to local residents and deliveries only as the town of Shirley is replacing a culvert on Whitney Road. I did have something in here about the special merit awards, and just in the case that there's folks who tuned in at the end of the meeting, I'm just going to announce it again, the special merit award nominations are now open, applications are available on July 24th. This is for employees who belong to the Salary Administrative Plan, and award nominations will be accepted for communications as a category, efficiency, and pinnacle of excellence. I've already received quite a few nominations, but keep them coming. We had a summer ice cream social last week, during which employees were provided opportunities to comment on topics such as future employee events, onboarding and orientation, the SAP, and the sick leave bank, and I wanted to thank Cherry Hill for contributing several additional pints of cookie dough ice cream to that event. Okay, at a previous select board meeting, there were some questions about the sewer billing and delinquency rates, so in response to that inquiry, I asked the sewer business manager to provide some details on the FY25 delinquency rates. You'll see that embedded in the town manager report, but there's a total of $107,653.99 owed from FY25, and the chart breaks that down by quarter. So, you'll see the first quarter has the lowest amount, lowest percent delinquency, those are the oldest bills, that's what you would expect. So, the first quarter is monetarily wise is 4.8.1% delinquent, at $14,000 and change owed, versus fourth quarter, which just concluded with $39,420 at a 15.97% owed. So, I had heard talk of some big 29% delinquency rate, that's not evidenced by these numbers. And then there's just some data there as well for the board about the majority of customers owing more than one quarter, so 115 customers owe more than one quarter, and 53 customers owe all four quarters. Last week, the facilities director and I joined the Green Communities meeting, Dave Black invited us, so thank you, Dave, if you're still listening. He had recently attended the Mass Save Summit and was reporting on a variety of funding opportunities. Based on his presentation, we are meeting with our regional coordinator for Green Communities and National Grid to discuss two of the funding opportunities that were presented. The first is the Portfolio Prioritization Plan, which is a high-level energy use analysis of all buildings within the town and results, and schools, and results in a list of buildings being prioritized for electrification, complete with next steps. So, we're going to perhaps pursue that funding, and as well, there's the Comprehensive Building Assessment, where we would attain, obtain detailed evaluation of one building's energy performance, as well as the systems with recommendations for upgrades. So, Member MKI, I want to thank for the next item, with the recent tragedy in Texas, she encouraged me to put back out to residents about our code red system. Um, she encouraged me to put back out to, to residents about our Code Red system. So, uh, residents are encouraged to sign up for Lunenburg's Code Red Notification System. This system allows residents to be notified in the event of emergency situations or critical community alerts, such as evacuation notices, bioterrorism alerts, boil water notices, and missing child reports. We have recently readvertised Code Red on our town news section of our website and as well as social media. For those folks that are listening and are interested in learning more or looking where to sign up, it's great. We don't use it as a community. Some communities use it for announcements about everything, like, we really don't. We use it for emergencies, so you won't get spammed. Um, and you can always un-enroll. Grant writer program. Um, as a reminder, $50,000 was included in FY26 budget for the grant writer program. I am finalizing the application package to send out and hope to send it out to departments, boards, committees, and commissions by the end of the week. Um, I know I've had a few folks asking about how they can access that fund, those funds, um, and so those, that set of documents are going to outline all of, all of what the funding is for. Um, at a prior meeting, I had reported damage to the fence and place structure at Wallace Park. Uh, I had reported that the estimate was $18,000, um, and that current estimate, based on, um, getting actual quotes for the replacement, is now $30,934. And we have forward that on to our insurance company. I also reported at the last meeting that the MART Connect program, um, had been canceled and as it had not been carried forward through the FY26 budget. Uh, MART has informed the town that they're continuing coverage through, just through July, um, so they did pick up an extra month at their cost. So thank you, MART. Uh, project updates. Uh, the Ritter Roof Project is nearly complete. The facilities director is viewing the project with, uh, with a drone, uh, to establish the final punch list. Um, the access control project at Town Hall remains in a holding pattern due to component availability. Um, parts are starting to be delivered now, but it will take several weeks before all the electrical components are in hand. And yesterday, the town opened bids for cleaning of municipal buildings. As you recall, we had to terminate our previous contract and rebid it, um, and the award will be made and contract executed in the next several weeks. Uh, in the meantime, we do have a temporary cleaning company servicing the buildings. Uh, for staff vacancies, we have a nine-hour-week dietary aid position. We have, uh, a 36-hour-per-week meal site worker position, which will be posted this week, both internal and external. Uh, we have a payroll and benefits coordinator position, which has not been advertised yet at 32 hours per week. Um, this is to replace a planned retirement that's going to occur in October. Uh, the executive assistant to the town manager and select board is posted at 36 hours per week, equipment operator 40 hours per week, and I am still waiting on Labor Council for the land use director position. And, uh, for the conservation administrator position, I had reported that the interim conservation agent, Herlen Jamie, has agreed to continue, uh, on with us as we explore next steps. Um, and last week, the chair of the Conservation Commission, uh, met with myself and the HR director to discuss potential revisions, uh, to the job description before we take any next steps. Um, let's see, I, I don't necessarily have all these still board and committee vacancies anymore. So Agricultural Commission no longer has a vacancy. Uh, thank you, Ms. Muzzi. Um, Architectural Preservation District Commission has one, Cultural Council has two, Green Communities has two associates, Historical Commission has one, Personnel Board has five, PAC has one, Stormwater Task Force no longer has one, thank you, Mr. Muzzi, and the Zoning Board of Appeals has one vacancy for an associate member.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for the town manager?
I have two around sewer.
Two around sewer, yeah.
Um, have the bills gone out?
So the bills are, the first quarter bills are scheduled to go out the first week in August.
Will that be the first run through the...
So he has done some things through the system. This will be the first bill run through the system.
Okay, all right, let's hope it goes.
No, he's, he's...
That's been, that's been a problem in the past.
He's, he's saying he's not concerned, but we'll see.
I, I hope that fixed it. Um, the other thing, and you may not know this, I'm just curious, so it's not that important, but of the delinquent, delinquent, um, bills, do you know of residents versus business?
Ooh.
I think we've had an issue in the past with some businesses.
Looking at the detailed list that I have, there are some businesses, but the vast majority are residents.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. New business, vote to declare police vehicles, DPW vehicles and equipment, and PAC equipments as surplus to the town manager. Do you want to just talk to all of these pieces of equipment?
Sure, give me a moment. So PAC is seeking to surplus DVD duplicator with no value, a Mac computer tower with no value, um, a Tricast and keyboard, a monitor, PC speakers, two Sony camcorders, a telephone, a neckgear router, and two PC towers. And then, uh, DPW and police. There is a 2004 Ford F-350, um, which must be towed off-site. Um, it has an estimated value of $1,000. A 2001 Ford F-350, uh, which has been sitting for a number of years, estimated at $1,000. A 2008 Ford F-350, um, also estimated at $1,000, and it's been sitting for a few months. A 2008 Trackless MT5T with attachments, estimated value is $1,000. It has a broken axle. A GMC pickup truck, if you look, you can see in the, in the images you have, there's a tree sitting on the hood of it. Um, estimated value is less than $500. Uh, these are, these are the two police vehicles that were picked up. The GMC cab and chassis also estimated at less than $500.
All right, any questions on any of this?
So, is there like a policy in place to prevent things like this from happening? Like vehicles sitting in the, in the lot for, for apparently years?
So...
And, and are they...
So there's no policy. I'll say that there is not, this is my third municipality, and there's not one that doesn't have this issue. Um, I think it's just simply a matter of getting the time to say that this is something that we are no longer gonna go forward with trying to maintain or retain, and then the next steps are really what is the, takes time, is getting this auctioned off. Um, we did have somebody show, so typically, the typical way is that you are listing on a, as a, on a website like Munisabid, um, if not Munisabid, and you are dealing with all of the interactions for the sales and people coming to pick it up, and it really is not just as simple as the vote that occurs tonight. Um, but there is a, a new vendor that approached the DPW and said, we'll take care of all that for you. And so that's, that's the route he's gonna go, which is really what caused some of the impetus to make this happen at this time. I have been encouraging all departments throughout town to look at all of their spaces and things and purge the documents and purge the stuff, and that's why you're seeing some of the departments put forward a lot more surplus requests than they normally have. But there's no policy, per se, about how, how long we hold on to our trash.
Yeah. I know it is an awkward process for the town, but like particularly with the PAC equipment, there's really no identifying information, you know, it's just like computer towers. Is that something that we're just affirming a vote that they took, that they've identified this property as?
So this isn't coming from the PAC board. They don't deal with day-to-day operations of PAC. This is coming from the director of PAC.
Oh, okay. And there's just, but it's, it's, it's interesting, because it's just really pretty nondescript, you know, it's just computer towers.
So I'm happy to go back to the staff and ask for a more detailed request. It's gonna be more time of the staff going through, and and I don't know, I mean, like serial numbers, is that what we're looking for?
Well, I guess my, my point was, they might as well just get rid of the stuff, and it doesn't necessarily even have to have this process.
Oh, well, so that would be illegal.
Yeah.
That would be illegal. So we need to vote to declare things surplus, um, to dispose of them or to auction them.
Yep.
Um, I think that the board certainly could have a surplus policy that anything under a certain value, sometimes you see things like 500, 1,000, don't require a vote of the select board. That could be a policy, that those things can be surplused by the town manager. That's certainly what some communities do.
Yeah, that seems to make more sense than us just approving getting rid of two computer towers.
There is literally a room in the TC Passios Building, we've already surplused it, but that is just, it is a repository of where all of the old IT went. And some of it you hold on to because you have to pay to dispose of it.
All right, so I will move to declare the vehicles and PAC equipment as surplus.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to old business. So discussion on tri-board meeting of the select board, finance committee, and school committee. All I will say is that I thought it went really well. I thought it was productive. Um, I think there were times where people had disagreements, but they were able to work through those, um, and it was really good to see, and I'm pretty hopeful on the process. Any discussion on that tonight?
No.
I would agree.
All right, great. Moving on, discussion on sick leave bank policy. We'll pick this back up at a future meeting. Tax investigation report, same thing. And 56 Carr Ave. So we did have our site visit yesterday. Um, wouldn't say we were really able to see too much of the property. Uh, so Carr Ave is a pretty narrow gravel road, and it doesn't actually go all the way up, uh, to the property. Um, so it kind of stops at 54 Carr Ave, which is a developed property that is completely, um, surrounded by 56 Carr Ave. Uh, it is pretty, um, there's a lot of woods back there. It's very steep as well. Um, so I just wanted to open it up for a discussion to see what people's reactions were to actually seeing the property and where we're at.
I don't think there's much we can do with it. It's, it's zoned currently as residential A. Does anyone...
I think so, yeah.
Yep.
I don't know what A means. Um, I think we talked a little bit about potentially one use would be like a solar field, but not, you would have to go to ZBA, change the zoning, clear a lot of land. It's not accessible, steep cliff, it's wet. Um, it's not really an attractive piece of land.
I would agree. I think there's other opportunities, Lunenburg land, too, for a solar field. Uh, I would also, uh, reference what the town manager had stated at one point, that the, the goal is to get it back on the tax rolls, and I think that's, that's where my head is, is get it back on the tax rolls and sell the property.
Yes, I agree. It's not an attractive piece of property.
Yeah, I agree. It's hard to imagine really anything going there, and there's really certainly no value for the town in, uh, trying to do anything with it, uh, quite frankly. So it looks like we're all in agreement on that. Um, so we could vote on this, we could hold off on taking action.
I don't think you need to vote, because I think if you were, if you were gonna hold it, I think that that changes the trajectory. That's why I think this was being, but if, if you're not gonna hold it, I think that's fine. I don't think a vote's necessary. We let it go through the process, and then you take your formal vote, um, after the judgment enters, if the judgment enters.
Mm-hmm.
You do have to take a formal vote within those 14 days.
14 days, okay, understood. All right, well, is there any other discussion on that tonight? All right, minutes, we do have two sets, right? April 8th and June 3rd. Have members had a chance to look over those?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Um, I move to approve the minutes from April 8th, 2025, and June 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I always forget to ask for extensions. Any abstentions?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes 301. Any action items? And I did skip over warrants. I don't believe there's any warrants. All right, committee reports.
Planning Board had a brief meeting the other night. A lot of their public hearings were canceled, so there's nothing to report on, uh, Planning Board. That's about it.
The Board of Assessors met June 11th. They're also meeting tomorrow. Uh, they do have a vacancy for one member. Uh, they're only at two right now. They had 17 excise tax abatements. A lot more abatements are coming in. Uh, chapter land applications have been organized. Four of them have no liens. Uh, one sold, and they're trying to go back to the seller. They're all supposed to have liens on Chapter 61, uh, for rollback taxes. Uh, for years, it wasn't being monitored, and now they're staying on top of it. Uh, filing liens with the Registry of Deeds and going forward isn't gonna be an issue. The Building Department and Board of Health have been helping a lot of the work. They're going through about 500 cyclical inspections, um, just for data purposes. They talked about how in 2023, with the tax abatements, there were about 427, but historically, it's around 30 to 40. They talked about chapter land. They're gonna be doing, uh, site visits on the chapter land. Uh, two people working together on the same street, but there's no escorts of police officers or anything like that. Um, September 30th is the contract, is the contract deadline, a vision contract. Uh, they're up to date on the deeds. 13A is additional growth that's been submitted. There's this other state, um, similar to the Chapter 61, but it's called APR. Uh, and if land is in APR, it can't be valued more than Chapter 61, and there's no liens on the properties. Uh, there's quite a few, but they didn't want to make, you can't have a duplicate of Chapter 61 in APR, so they were making sure that that didn't happen. Uh, 222 West Townsend Road property was approved. They were talking about approving or not approving for potential sale. Uh, that was approved. They also discussed the brochure posting in the Adult Activity Center, uh, for applying for tax breaks and exemptions. And they also talked to Town Council on 41A, uh, and, and different addresses, and 61A and 61B, and liens, whether they could, whether they could do that in an open meeting. And they did have a... They did have a meeting that was not an open meeting in between the dates. Where was, I'm trying to think of the language. They went to executive session.
Oh, okay.
But there's no minutes from now.
Do you have any?
No.
Okay, so the Council on Aging met last Tuesday. It was Lou Franco and Jack Rabbit's first meeting, so they were welcome to the council. Um, a thank you letter from the outgoing members, Judy Tarbo and Pete Lincoln, was read, thanking the Council on Aging members for their dedication to our senior citizens. Um, the kitchen staff is very limited right now, due to some injuries, actually. So Deb Goodsell, Pauline, and Michelle have pretty much taken over the kitchen duties, uh, and they are asking for volunteers in the kitchen as well as Meals on Wheels drivers. Uh, so they're looking for backup drivers, and they also have one, uh, shift that is on Thursdays for one hour that they're looking for a volunteer for as well. Jack Rabbit discussed, uh, Margaret Scarsdale's ambassador program that she has put together. So she has, uh, a program of ambassadors, one from each community that she represents, and Jack Rabbit is the ambassador from Lunenburg. Um, so he wants to use that as an opportunity to advocate for senior citizens directly to her. Um, and he also discussed, uh, some updates with the deferral program, the tax deferral program. They, um, are pretty much working through the first case, I guess, and they're using it as, um, a case study. There's a lot of discussion on a proposal to offer free building permits to seniors. Um, so it was mentioned that it could specifically go for projects under $10,000. Um, the council sort of discussed what sort of, uh, qualifications they would want, whether it was just age, but there was no, um, formalized, uh, plan on that. Um, and the goal really is to encourage seniors to get permits for their own protection and to, uh, simplify the process by, um, pretty much giving an incentive to then educate the public on what the proper process is for permitting. Uh, they discussed upcoming programs and events. There's a whole bunch of them. So August 4th, there is... So August 4th, there is a Cooking for One class, which is something that the director wants to try to do regularly now, and they will be teaching you how to cook summer orzo salad. So they will give you the ingredients to bring home as well. On August 11th is what is called Close Encounters. So they are bringing in an expert on extraterrestrial life to discuss aliens. On, let's see, August 18th, there's a Henda class and many others, and that's pretty much it. All right, upcoming meetings, we are going to have a meeting on August 5th, August 19th, and then August 26th is a tri-board meeting. Public comment, is there any public comment from the public? Not seeing any, any public comment from the town manager.
Nope.
Any public comment from the board?
I will not be present at the August 5th meeting. I'll be away.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment. I was asked to, I was contacted by the group called the Artisans of Hickory Hills. They sent me a letter to read, but I'll give you a little introduction. There was a group of residents on Hickory Hills Lake that organized and created this group, the Artisans of Hickory Hills. It consists of a lot of artisans, people who paint, do all sorts of, of art, and they organized to, everyone donated pieces of work, and it was on display at the library for about two or three weeks as a silent auction. And this was the first year they did it. And so I'll, I'll read you their official letter, and it covers the, the results of the auction. So the Artisans of Hickory Hills orchestrated an art auction on June 14th this summer, which was held at the Lunenburg Public Library. Many gifted and talented residents of Hickory Hills donated original art, including watercolors, acrylics, and framed photographs, and handmade crafts such as jewelry, quilts, sculpture, and wearables. The silent auction was open to all Lunenburg residents who purchased over 60 items. The auction was a huge success with over $4,000 being generated. The Artisans of Hickory Hills Committee will be gifting two $1,000 scholarships to the Lunenburg High School Art Program recipients, and the remainder will benefit the Hickory Hills Lake Restoration Program. The Artisans of Hickory Hills are thrilled to be able to donate scholarship funds to high school arts program recipients. Giving back to the community is so important. So I think, one, this was the first year they did it. It was more successful than I expected, so I want to thank the organizers, thank folks at the library, thank the people who contributed their work, and of course, the residents who, who bid and bought these different pieces of work. The group reached out to the high school art program. This was kind of when we were coming out of all of the override budget, because I wanted to give back to the school, particularly the art program. And so the, the high school art, and the superintendent, I think, was also involved. Rather than, than having the money go towards supplies, they actually preferred to have it go through to these scholarships. So I think they'll be awarded in May, and I think they're going to do it again. So hopefully, if they do, I hope they are even more successful, because you know, you always learn after you do an event the first time. So thanks to everyone, to the residents, for, you know, taking the initiative and giving back to the community.
Great, thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It is 9:52 PM, and the select board is adjourned.